There was some evidence of a meeting notice.
The county Board of Supervisors' August 16th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website on Friday, August 5th, 2022, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of August 8th, 2022. In addition, on August 5th, 2022, at 12:50 PM, the Office of the County Clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the Government Center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice were distributed to supervisors via email Friday, August 12th, 2022.
Also, that has been a notice?
It complies with the open meetings law.
Okay, roll call.
Brad Wilson.
Here.
Doug Roddy.
Here.
Eve Wornall.
Here.
Ryan Wood.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruff.
Here.
Barbara Mathew.
Here.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Tim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lally or Crane.
Here.
Doug Artan.
Here.
CJ Simmons.
Here.
And John Bonapri.
Here.
We have all 15 here.
Okay, well, I understand.
I invite the delegations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda, we're making a slight change in the agenda, and on number eight, we're switching Resolution 3722B, that's B, to D, and D to B. If you didn't quite understand that, Resolution D is going to be second, and Resolution D will be fourth. I move to approve the agenda and the event. Second motion made in second to approve the agenda has, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Any motion on the matter about?
I'll second that.
Okay, any public comment?
Mr. Chair, we have two public comments in here today, so please state your name and where you're from.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Beck, my address is 1797 State Road 87, St. Fred Falls. I vote to have the township of St. Fred Falls, and I'm in District 8. Last Thursday, August 11th, 2022, I filed a verified complaint with the Polk County Executive Committee. I brought copies for you all tonight that I think you have received. And please note that this is a slightly different document than what I left for you at the July meeting. This is the actual verified complaint. Running for public office is one of the most important ways citizens can serve our community. That is what motivated us when we stepped up to run for the nonpartisan April 2022 Polk County Supervisor election. This is a public, not political, position. Instead, this act of community service made up targets of well-funded and vicious partisan attacks. I am filing this claim to request that the county investigate the unethical and illegal campaign activities. In the claim, the violations are stated with the policy and statutes noted. Please read through these carefully. Many who have read the ads felt Mr. Nelson's statements were in poor taste, but that is not where the violations lie. He used in title his title in ways that are unethical and illegal that are clearly identified by law. The other part of my claim concerns a letter that was mailed last March right before the election. The language in the letters took an emotional toll on us candidates, but again, that is not where the violations lie. Even though the letter was signed by the Polk County Republican Party group and had a return address to their chairman's residence, the group's election financial statement does not claim the cost of this letter specifically. We still do not know who paid for this letter mailed to seven districts. It has similar language as the Nelson ads. Are these two actions connected? Also worth a look is how the social media campaign by the Polk County Fire Bureau is connected to the ads and the letter. They endorse the same candidates of the letter and use similar language. If these actions are connected and coordination with candidates is found, this is illegal in Wisconsin. I did not file this complaint because my feelings were hurt by the ads in the letter, or this is sour grapes, or that I'm a poor loser. I filed this complaint because I feel there have been unethical and illegal activities surrounding the election. I do not pretend to know the answers to the many questions surrounding these matters. Even if I could go further with fact-finding, your county council, rightfully so, would say that my investigation does not count, it's just hearsay. That is why I'm asking the county to do a local investigation. You all took oaths to uphold the law when you took office. Mr. Nelson took those two. Nelson was on the board when these actions took place. He should be held accountable. This was my first time running for public office. We all know it can be challenging for people to want to run for these positions. Is this what we want Polk County elections to become? By investigating and reporting back to us, citizens, you will encourage the atmosphere of trust between public officials and the community that is central to our government. Historically, our county forefathers saw the need to make the supervisor positions nonpartisan. It is important that it stay that way for the board to function well. The mission of Polk County government is to serve and represent the public with integrity. Please find out what happened here. Make sure future voters and candidates do not have to put up with this kind of unethical and illegal activity. Thank you.
Okay, that's over three minutes, so more than that.
Hi, my name is Lisa Door, and I'm a proud resident of the town of Lake Town. I'm here to ask each of you to support this convening of the Polk County Ethics Board to investigate the unethical and illegal activities conducted during the 2022 Polk County Board of Supervisors election. Under Polk County's Ethics Policy Resolution 2408, any investigation would be overseen by the Ethics Committee in its role as the Ethics Board, excuse me, of the Executive Committee in its role as the Ethics Board. Some people will try to confuse this issue by saying that we want to take away candidates' First Amendment rights or sue for defamation. That could not be farther from the truth. Becky's complaint has nothing to do with First Amendment rights or defamation. Instead, she clearly lays out violations of county policy and state law in Wisconsin. Some people will also try to say that ethics is a very gray area and impossible to legislate, but that's also quite far from the truth. Specifically, her complaint lays out the paid advertising, mailing, and social media activities that violate your ethics policy and four state statutes. Our first concern is a very expensive ad campaign run by Chairman Chris Nelson in which he falsely claimed that as chair, he had the responsibility to inform the public of extreme activists that live amongst us. Article 7 of your Rules of Order very precisely defines the chair's duties, and nowhere does that include a responsibility to inform the public of anything. Article 7A of your Code of Ethics is also very clear. No supervisor may use his authority or position to control or modify the political activity of another person. In addition, Chairman Nelson may have abused Wisconsin's misconduct in public office statute 946.12, paragraph 2, if he knowingly acted in excess of his lawful authority. Our second area of concern has already been mentioned, the letter by the public county Republicans sent to seven districts, which may potentially violate Wisconsin's campaign finance statute 11.1203 prohibiting campaign coordination. Candidates smeared by these letters were not contacted for their positions. However, some candidates benefiting from the letter were contacted, and the letters mimic Nelson's ads by making these ridiculous claims in bold type about radical activists. In addition, expenses for the letter have not been reported by the Polk County Republicans in violation of the Wisconsin Campaign Finance 11.0304, paragraph 3. Expenses cited by the corporate council last week totaled only $250 and were reported as a January chairman's letter. That would in no way cover a mailing that went out in early April to thousands of homes, including mine. Many of you are victims of these activities, many of you benefited from them. In either case, without holding these people accountable, the tables could quickly turn on you. Please support the investigation, and thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Moving to Resolution. Resolution A. Resolution 2122, amending the Code of Ordinance.
Chairman, this is one that was introduced really by the clerk's office. They kicked this off because of our large public assembly ordinance is so outdated. It hasn't been done in quite a while. And so, the initial attempt was to update the wording, clarify some things, make it relevant to today's world. If you recall, I think it was a couple of months ago, it was brought forward before the board, and a couple of questions came up. I know Denise had a few, and we went back and met with our public health folks, our zoning folks, the corporation council. We kind of cleaned up the wording and made it more clear. But it's something that I think our clerk is better able now to assist people when they come to these large public assemblies. We only have one so far in Polk County, and that's been Dennis Prohlaugen. We also put clarity in here that this does not pertain to the county fair. So, the one question I think Denise, you had dealt with, the number of EMTs or medically related people. For some reason, the old language kept it at five, I think. And what we did was, we did not allow it to have a cap, but instead, there must be an EMT here, one of similar health qualifications, one for 1,000 people. So I think it meets the needs for the clerk, and I think it addressed the questions that were brought up.
Okay. Pleasure.
I make a motion we approve Resolution 2122. I'll second that.
And the second? Need more discussion on it? Go ahead.
I got one question, page 13 of our back. On number seven, it says a free parking area. Can we do that? Can we make them not charge for parking? But why is that in there?
Oh, that's a good question.
I mean, do we just have a parking area, at least one for every four people? But I'm pretty sure they charge for parking also. So we're going to tell them they can't charge?
Yeah.
Just a question.
Probably because that's what they do down at Prohlaugen. So it looks like that's a remnant of the previous ordinance that was there.
Yeah. But I'm sure it says they charge for parking.
They charge for it.
Charge to get in or whatever, they're going to have to call it something else. Why would we have that on our? So I'm saying. They're telling somebody if they can charge or not.
Mr. Chair, I believe the concern is that if there's charged parking, you're going to create parking on the roadways.
Hmm.
Oh, okay.
So they just call it something else. I just seen that, I was just wondering.
Any more discussion?
The other one on that same page is number 12. We don't have a way to control that yet, so how are we going to do that? For noise.
You were right, I think that was left in just to make sure that the app can do that. You know, you're responsible for noise and take that case, you could leave it out, but we wanted to make sure there was something on noise in there.
I think that one has a township as a witness, but I mean, we at the county don't have one, the noise doesn't measure itself, so it'd be hard to enforce.
All right. Mr. Chair. Go ahead. I'm confused about that. Card for parking, I believe the Prohlaugen 4x4, the event that they have, probably 10,000 or more. I was only understanding that they charge for parking. I can't, sure, I've been there. We got an interordance, right?
Maybe they charge for camping. Yeah.
Yep.
They give it a different name.
Yeah, they charge for admittance, that's what it was a hundred years ago, there's so much to get in, including the parking. Whether they call it what they want to call it, but that wasn't said what they did. That was quite some time ago.
And there's signs on the road, no parking, right?
I don't know if we should be responsible.
I would imagine then that the thought would be is if you remove it, then that they're not required to provide any parking. You know, so. Yeah. But if you struck free, they'd still have to require, they'd still be required to just have the parking inside.
Yeah. But yeah.
Can most of them?
Right.
Well, I'll amend that, so on line seven there, that the word "free" is struck.
I would second that. Hey. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of the gentleman?
Aye.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Follow question in reference to to the the resolution 2122, as amended. All in favor? If you're a 5x5, aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. None. Now we'll go to Resolution 4022. This resolution is in reference to funds. It requires a two-thirds vote to bring it to the floor. So, we'll need a motion to bring it to the floor.
And will we bring this 4022 to the floor?
Second. I made the second to bring it to the floor. Roll call. Any discussion other than that? Go ahead.
I'm just curious. Well, you have to bring it to the floor for discussion.
Oh, we got a roll call, both.
Roll call, both for the revenue.
Bring it to the floor?
Yeah.
Okay. Sharon Kelly. Barbara Mathew. Yes, yes, okay. Sharon Kelly.
Yes.
Tim O'Connell.
No.
Amy Middleton.
Yes.
Jay Luke? Oh, I can come back, sorry. Denise Lally or Crane?
Yes.
Doug Artan?
No.
CJ Simmons?
Yes.
John Bonapri?
Yes.
Brad Wilson?
No.
Doug Roddy?
Yes.
Eve Wornall?
Yes.
Ryan Wood?
Yes.
Tracy LeBlanc?
No.
Dan Ruff?
No.
Nine? Yes. Oh, I want.
I think Chairman Lou is going to have to vote.
Yep, that would be it, I was off by one, I'm sorry. Yep, so I have nine guesses right now, and one, two, three.
Yes.
Okay. Ten guesses, five nulls. What's on the floor?
Oh, it's on the floor for caution.
After the last public safety and works meeting, you went, I went out, or I was heading home, but they were setting up a long, what did they think? I walked over there, because I was early. The sheriff was so gracious, told me the vehicles that they have, and
Yeah, pardon? Can you hold off until we get to the resolution on the floor?
Oh, sure, I can, I can wait.
I can motion to. It is on the floor.
No, motion, we were, yeah, there were 10 guesses and five nulls.
I thought it means two-thirds to bring the resolution.
Yeah, yeah. You just voted yes.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. They're thinking of what, about two-thirds, just to bring it to the floor, and then two-thirds. Go ahead.
So the last thing I told me was the command center. And we went inside, and the rear wall is all damaged because of moisture, because the roof is leaking. And then we went up to the front, where the slide out, wherever that's called, slide out. And there's big grooves in the floor because it doesn't align anymore, so you have to almost push it out, it's cutting its way out to the outside. Then he was talking about the generator being shot, and you can't get parts for it anymore, so it's probably on and on about different things, then we went outside, and the chief deputy, he, Don Barros was outside, and he started showing us how he had climbed up and fixed the roof in the rear and all the cloth he fixed. He was there, then we went to the front, and he showed us all the cloth he used on the front. And there's no other way to put it, that vehicle has served its life. It's just pretty much shot.
It is.
That's my observation.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead. To kind of piggyback, supervisor Rowdy's comment there, at Health and Human Services, that's where I've done all my learning about this vehicle, its purpose, everything like that. So, in general, the people who brought this resolution forward have done a good job in doing a weeve as the people to justify the expense, to get the details on what the money is going to go towards, why investing that money in something like this is important. We could go into those if we wanted to, but then there's also what I learned from being on the Health and Human Services Committee. Bill Leva, who's a member of that, who I've known, he was my high school principal, reiterated that this is something that he's thrown his support behind in previous years. And he's very passionate about the need to get this done because of the same observations, the same important reasons that we need a vehicle like that in the county. And he let us know that in the past, he strongly, strongly recommended that we move forward replacing that vehicle. And you know, lo and behold, we're still in the same situation now at a higher cost. And then somebody who I've just met this year after joining Health and Human Services, Dr. Vargas, somebody who's very respected amongst this group, that you know, I've learned, and he's certainly earned my respect in the very short time that I've known him, and he too. He also reiterated the same sentiment that Bill Leva said, that even before Bill, he had said this vehicle needs to be replaced, and at the time, it would have cost like around $400 or $450,000. So two things with that. One is, the reason that the vehicle needs to be replaced has remained for years. And then now, just like other expenses that we've justified spending on, the cost is only going to increase. So, I've been convinced by those folks in Health and Human Services, many I really respect, that the need for the vehicle is there, but then also, common sense of getting it done now versus getting it done no more.
Go ahead, Chair.
Well, I think prior to COVID, I think we can all agree, the vehicle sat in the garage most of the time except for the Polk County Fair. It was not used by Health and Human Services, very seldom, I mean, it was used up in Cyren when they had the tornado that time, and it went up there. My question is, what's the role of our clinics in this county versus a mobile center? Because we talk about it in this, in this, in this resolution. You know, I know that in the drive-through things, there were 10,000 vaccinations given out, given out, and I know that the command post was used 85 times as a mobile clinic. How many shots were given, vaccinations were given, the 85 times it went out? And is the intent, I mean, people still have to drive to get to the mobile clinic. So if they can drive to the mobile clinic, what's preventing them from driving to the regular, to their clinics, to their doctors? And is our intent to replace clinics now for vaccinations and, and things like that? I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand. I know during the pandemic, it was helpful, but, and we had it over at the drive-through things, but we didn't need that big bus over there for EMTs to sit in and be available if somebody had a problem after getting a vaccination. They, they didn't need a bus to do that, they could have done that just by having someone there. I just have a question, I'm going to have a hard time going to my constituents and saying, I voted to approve $750,000 for a bus that the majority of the time sits in the garage and is hardly used. And then here it talks about it's the, it's the backup for the 911 center. 911 today, if you remember when we had this discussion before, the 911 calls do not roll to the command center. The 911 calls roll to another county's 911 system. And then people are dispatched from there. They don't go, they do not. Dan and Sherwood Black both told me that, they told our committee that when we asked that. The 911 calls do not roll to the command center. That's what we were told when we went through this earlier in the year.
So you're right that the calls go.
It'll order, it'll order, one person has the floor.
Continue on.
So, so I question, I question the need for almost a million dollars to be spent for something that, what is the purpose? Literally to replace our clinics? What is, you know, because, and, and we say things in here that it's, it's likely these services will need to be expanded. Why? Why, why are the services, why do they need to be expanded? Do our clinics and hospitals not offer enough services? I've not heard that before. And, and it talks about, there was something else I had on here, I left my sheet of paper on at my desk at home, but so I questioned the need for it. And I mean, it's a, it's a nice to have, if we had a million dollars sitting around that we had nothing else to spend it on. We have a lot of things that are funding. We've had this thing for years. It wasn't on a continuous improvement plan ever to be replaced. It wasn't, it came up when ARCA funds became available, then all of a sudden, we had a need for a command, new command center. Other than that, we never heard about it, the whole time I've been on the board. So I, I question the need for it.
Got it? Just for clarification, in case of an emergency, yes, the call would go to Barron County. But Barron County cannot relate to, to our emergency. That Barron County would relate to this command center, and then the command center would relate to all the, all the emergency people. So that is the dire, dire need, you know, life-saving, and we just experience something, and counting and things that happen in St. Fred County that we just did that. And we, it, it, it's just not a fact, yeah, it's stored in a garage, and, but it's stored there for cases of emergency, and emergencies happen, and that command center is definitely, definitely likely. And that's what we have to be aware of. Beyonce?
Yep. Having spent 22 years as a safety professional, health and safety professional, I can tell you that failing to plan is planning to fail. And had we not had that command center, a mobile clinic to go out to the communities, to relieve the strain on those medical clinics and hospitals, providing a one-in, one-out, so you're not bringing sick people into, into an environment where you don't want your people at risk to catch whatever it is that they're getting.
And this vehicle, uh, I, my first question is like, how, how much did we pay for this vehicle? And, and we got in our money worth yet? So if, if, I was told that it was, it was funded through 9/11, a grant through 9/11. And the community used it. And the community used it hard during a pandemic. You know, I don't care how you feel about that pandemic. It was you. And it was vital. If we would not have had that, we would have had to hunt and done something different. I, I, I participated on the last planning for a pandemic in 2003. And I can tell you that it's very, very hard to, to deal with a lot of people driving to a location to, to either test, test, vaccinate, treat, um, give supplies and food. It is 20 years old. It's fallen apart. This is grant money that is available to us because of COVID-19. Do we want, do we want all of the, do we want the constituents to be having, to have this available to them? Or do we want to use it in, in Paulson Lake? It's, it's a very, to me, it's a no-brainer. I, I like the idea of, of sanitary surfaces in, in case there's a, um, something else crazy that comes along. I like the idea of being able to roll into a community that just had their hospital annihilated. And I had, had an F4 tornado experience where that happened. And luckily, we had the National Guard, and I know the National Guard had come in, but there's still a gap that we would experience. And having a vehicle like that, that is again funded by a grant, i- is a no-brainer. That's all I got to say.
Can you tell them when you told me about what it's like?
Go to the order.
Anybody else have any comment?
Just to follow up here. Because it seems at the end here, we were talking a lot about health and I, we were totally using this vehicle for that. But in talking to the sheriff one-on-one, you find out the vehicles he has that aren't used on a daily basis, but they're needed when they're needed. And that's one of the biggest ways that he looks at it is that it's here and there's an incident and he can take it out there and command his officers through whatever situation there is. And he was very adamant about how much it's needed.
In our, Don, I don't want to get real nitpicky here. In our, our rules of order, we speak once to a resolution until everyone has spoken. And we're, we're not in committee at all. We are in a business meeting under Robert's rules of order in our own. So let's just keep it.
Missed fact that he had already.
All right, just, let's just, we should, you should now, okay, we should.
Yeah, I, I, anybody else with any? Well.
Well, you know, I can agree that citizens, I look at this, hey, you give a lot of money until they need it. You know, until their child's lost, you know, child lost with this command center there. And, you know, that's where you go. You go to the command center, learn what we're doing, organize it, get help, pass, find a child. You know, if you don't have that, then you get chaos. But when you see that command center, 38 years on a fire department, I know exactly where to go. Get my instruction, what to do. That's where you go if you have a program. Probably equipment, resources are centralized on them. So, yeah, I mean, a citizen might say, geez, a lot of money until they need it. When their child is lost, or if they have a tornado or a storm in their area. So that's my two cents. I mean, I've been involved with instances where this unit was out there. And that's where you go. That's where you command the incident. Everybody go.
All right, we're on the. Go ahead. Me?
Yeah. Okay. So when this hit the agenda, I'd done some phone calls. I called every county with, I guess with the exception of two in the state that had between 40 and 50,000 people in it. So our size of county. The overwhelming response I got was when I said, did you use it for COVID? Was, why? What good is it for COVID? It's a sheriff's department vehicle. One county act body, 24-foot open trailer, um, to use once COVID hit. By the time they got it, towns had stepped up, businesses had stepped up, churches had stepped up, community had stepped up. They never used it when it came. Because it was there. And, and we talked about this running around to all of the communities. When COVID was on, the health department never called the town of Clam Falls and said, hey, can we use your town hall? Can we use your town shop? But they never called the church or business, anybody else, and said, can we come and have a clinic in Clam Falls? Buildings are there. They're free. They don't cost us $750,000. I guarantee you one thing, there's not a town, there's not a village, there's not a church, and there's probably not a school in this county who would turn the health department down to come in and give vaccines of, I guess, whatever kind we're going to give in this resolution, which looks like doctors and nurses may become obsolete because we're going to do it all. And that's what they're there for. We don't have to do it all. And, and I just think when, you know, when every other county is still driving, most of them are still driving their 20-year-old bus, just like we are, from a femingram. And none of them were looking to get a new one that were, that were our size. And if we want a new one, why aren't we then looking like what other counties do? And go buy the 24-footer that can work, that pulls behind a truck. What do we need? 750,000 mobile command center for, I'm, I'm just not sure it isn't. You know, maybe it's, maybe it's bad, but it gets used three to four times a year, five to six times a year. And this county, in every county I talked to, and I think the other counties done probably just as good a job as, as we did and did use their mobile command center for COVID. And I just don't see where we're headed down the road with, with this from a health department standpoint. Me?
So, um, the sheriff's department in the past has been the main user and keeper of the command center. And it was, was used once a week for the fair. Then the pandemic hit and the public health department embraced this vehicle, figured out how to maximize its use, figured out how to get it places that would make it easy, you know, Wayne's grocery store and lot to get a vaccine. And what, what COVID taught us was how we, as a pandemic, what pandemic taught us was how the public health department can utilize a vehicle like this. So we're not at all saying it's going to go back to this once a year at the fair use. The public health department has kind of recrafted their whole thinking about how to use this thing. And we're actually embracing it as a way to reach vulnerable populations, back to our communities. Um, and in that vein, I reached out to the executive director of ADRC and the aging community. What, what she was talking about, and I asked the question the sheriff brings up. Why can't we just shuttle people to clinics? And, and her point was, it would be really better for us to have like regions within the county that we shuttle people to for their flu shots or whatever it is. And so they, what works really well for them is to say, it's flu shot day with the mobile unit at full county. Hop on our bus, we'll shuttle you over there, you'll get your shot, you're done. Um, so that reaches that aging community, uh, low-income community. And we do it in different regions of the county. It was sort of what she was thinking about. So I don't think it's just the sheriff's department. This is a shared unit. And that's what makes this such a strong resolution is that the staff at public health and staff at the sheriff, everybody partnered together on how we should be using this thing. And one thing did become clear, which, but John was talking about is that we can ship 911 calls in an emergency to, uh, St. Croix or Barron County, but they don't ship them back to that exact address. So they don't say, um, go to, you know, Kim O'Connell's house, there's a problem there. They have to ship it back to us and that's where the command center comes in. So once I kind of got it figured that out, it, it does become still a command center in an emergency. Because we have to be able to do the micro phone calls out to these small little neighborhoods. And for a county can do big stuff, but we have to be able to do the little stuff. So as far as the role of the clinics, you know, obviously that's, clinics are never going to go away. But taking the burden off them is an important thing and being able to reach these populations that don't have cars, um, aging population that are looking for ADRC resources is really, I think, going to be important. And our, I mean, our census data is, we need to, you know, plan for an aging community. We should be working on this. So I just want to say in closing to, to thank the staff, because we've been working on this resolution for a year. And we've gone back to the table several times on, you know, questions that have come up from you guys, from committees. And this resolution really has done some due diligence and the staff really got in and dug through a lot of, you know, I asked a lot of questions, the year questions, and I think you like, they did a great job. And the sheriff's department behind here, but they are also on a P. Don, Don really got into the weeds with these guys figuring it out. So obviously I support it.
Anybody else? You know, I've got, you all came, I'm sorry.
Well, first of all, it's not, never grant. We think it's grant money. It's never free. It came through somewhere. Came out of one pocket and goes into the other. This is 750,000. What's the cost? What's the upkeep for the year on this? Another 100,000? Who can drive? Who can't? I mean, we're going to have an emergency, but we're going to have a machine sitting out here that nobody can drive. You have to have a chauffeur's license. We have to have this. We have to have that. I mean, have you looked into any of this? I think it's way too much for this. And it should have been in our, our, uh, capital improvement plan and went through the normal cycle. And not try to fit it in with so-called grant money, which we don't have. So that's my consensus and I am not voting for it. It's too much.
Anybody else that hasn't spoken?
Yeah. I think we could save ourselves a little time here. I said administrator wanted to speak. I don't know if it's more against, I don't care. Um, save a little time here. I mean, anyone that, we're going to have another round of discussion, maybe another round, we can. But every, I think everyone is made up of mine just a little. And I, I don't think anyone is being influenced. I don't think there's any, unless there is new, really new information, I think we're ready to vote.
And I'll call this.
Thank you. And I am speaking on behalf of the sheriff. And he called me yesterday afternoon. He was on vacation. Don is out of town. And he, he just said, please inform the committee that I have instructed Don to look at an alternative, um, unit. And, and what he meant by that is, in his words, were rather than automatically go to, he says, yes, our per machine needs replacing. He said, rather than going straight to the Cadillac version, in his word, he said, we can look at what he called the RV chassis and have it modified. That would be significantly less expensive. His, he's asked Don to look into and say, okay, what would it cost? What can we provide? How, how well would it work? His reasoning being, um, this one has lasted us 20 years or so. He said, we can go with an RV chassis and it won't last 15 years or so. Uh, and, and save the county significant money. So he said, ideally, he said, they could wait for another month. We'll have that information. Or, and this is just me speaking, if, if this board chooses to go with this facility, with this, uh, unit, it doesn't have to be, we could present to you the, the options and you could make the decision. Do we go with the commercial chassis? Do we go with the RV chassis? And, uh, I know we checked only St. Croix County. And then of one, they just, just bought a new one, uh, with a, an RV chassis and it was, they paid 550,000.
Okay.
He just asked me to, to make that.
I have a question on this resolution. If we were to approve a vehicle and we're not really seeing what kind, or actually what we're buying, isn't that correct on what this resolution indicates? We're seeing the administrator and the departments and the rapporteurs and the sheriff's department. You've got a number of people deciding how to spend up to 750,000.
Right.
This is not.
Up to.
Yeah, it's not telling us if it's going to be a brand-new unit or if it's going to be a, a used one or it's going to be some other type of aging conversion. Not, not specific as to what it is. By this resolution terminology. Is it?
No, I think you are reading it correctly. So thanks, question. So page, uh, line 42, 43, 44.
Yeah.
Stay the same and we can spend half this. We can spend 500,000.
But we just had a determination from our legal department that, uh, this is not very strict as to what we're spending it on.
Yeah.
I. Go ahead.
When's the last time government employees got the okay to spend 750,000 dollars?
Well, that's my point.
Last, yeah.
Exactly. That, that's my point. That's why I brought it up to the order. That was the purpose of my point.
I call a question. I'll make you come back with something different.
I just, can I ask you a question? Would this come, would this come back in front of the general government meeting before they spend that, any kind of money? Would not go in front of the, the finance committee?
That was the two-thirds get it to the floor because this has not gone to general government. So no, it would not.
No, I mean, if this was approved, would it go, or they could just spend 750,000?
This would be the last.
Okay, here.
Ooh.
All right, if we, if we, if we call the question and turn it down, it couldn't come back to the general government with more clarification. Is that correct for our next month's meeting? And recommendation of what?
Cleaner way would be instead of calling the question and having a vote would be to have this board refer it back to general government. That would be the cleaner way. But theoretically, if it were defeated, a new resolution substantially similar, but perhaps with a lot more detail, could come through general government, Health and Human Services, Public Safety.
Refer it, refer it back to general government as a vote, a two-thirds voter?
A referral back would only require a simple majority.
But if we use ARPA funds, Malia, it would still require a two-thirds vote to pass it, correct?
Yes.
When it comes back, right?
Yes. Unless it were a part of the budget process in November. That's the only way you would get away with it.
Hey, Mr. Chair. And part of receiving more info, um, if it does go back to Gen Gov and we'll look for more information, I would say that we need to find specific information on two options, new versus, uh, RP chassis. Because at Health and Human Services, we were told kind of contradictory information that, uh, RP chassis conversion involves lower-grade materials, less than medical-grade materials, and deteriorates much faster. And so I don't know where the 15-year versus 20-year came from. Because that HHS, that was part of the presentation that was put forward to us. Uh, the length of, the length of use of the new purchase versus the length of use versus the RV conversion. So that was part of what was told to us that Health and Human Services had informed that decision.
I recall a question.
Point of order, I don't believe anyone has made a motion to approve this and seconded it. It was brought to the floor and then discussion started. There was never a first and a second approved. So there's no question.
Maybe she's got her hand up, isn't she? Aren't we on this question phase?
A lot of people made a motion for that.
Well, I just was going to point out that we're in this funny little spot because if we send.
we send the whole unit back to the drawing board for like about the third time, we still have this other resolution that is talking about taking all of the ARPA funds and putting it in, in our, whatever we call it, general revenue. So those are at, at sort of conflicting odds for moving this forward, so.
Well, I understand that, but.
So we could make a motion to move it so it would go to the, to the next budget cycle? It wouldn't need two thirds votes, it would need simple majority and it would go through the normal process, we're almost there now. It's already at this time of the year, so I'd like to make a motion that it moves back to that and goes into the regular budget cycle. Then they could bring in all this other things that they want and more details and all that, and it would go through the normal process.
I'll second that. There was no motion on the floor.
That's.
That was the only one.
All right.
The other one was not brought to motion, so this is, the motion now is, is Kim, do you want to read it?
Oh, I believe it's just for this to go back through the regular budget process, is that right?
Yeah, it ju, yes, that it would go through the budget cycle so that they'd have more details or whatever, but just so it go through the normal cycle, because we're almost there now.
May I second any more discussion on that? Roll call, both play.
Sharon Kelly.
Yes.
Tim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton. Denise Lally, your favorite?
No.
Us, Arkan.
Yes.
DJ Siminas.
Yes.
Don Bonn Price. Brad Olson.
Yes.
Ron Brody.
No.
Steve Warndog.
No.
Ryan Wood.
No.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Rook.
Yes.
Barbara McAfee.
No.
We have seven to seven tie vote.
Yes.
Eight guesses and seven. Total majority, Malia.
So, now as far as our, our resolution 4022, what it had to do with that, it was intercepted. Regalistic, you know that.
Well, it didn't pass. You never voted on it. Right. But the vote was to take it out of its indifferent form and put it through the budget process.
When I say the budget, they're getting the same report, but I mean, it's just.
But can't we vote on it? Wait, what, sorry, 4022 was? Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm reading it backwards, we had all these notes on here. We have a vote, we just do.
Correct. Okay, now we go back to resolution, the vote two, resolution 3922.
What's to be approved?
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? What's your opinion, Sam?
Public comment?
Public opinion.
That's public opinion, it's out there. Who's over there? Do we have a camera?
Only after public comment we have to go on a leave, because I don't know, I can.
Can you pull the camera?
Yeah.
It is turned off, I can, I guess.
Well, they don't get rest. Okay, we're going to resolution 3722, create a budget overrun. Motion. Maybe say the, any discussion on that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat, you did the motions again.
Right, run.
Okay.
This actually went through our committee and we filled the funds, no matter what we do, it's all our full county dollars, it's undecided. We can spend them any way we choose or anything. So, and I think our committee felt that instead of dealing with every resolution that comes up to spend, they're like, we have to get it spent, just put it in the general fund, we'll, we'll have a budget, we'll get to amend the budget, we'll get to pick how we spend the money. And I don't know if it was unanimous in our committee, or not, but I, I feel a lot of the following. So here.
Any other comment?
Just a, and Ryan, a point to Supervisor Arkan's comment there, you said that you're not sure if it was unanimous, you brought up in Gen Gov that you assumed that it was not going to be a unanimous vote, and then you suggested that we put it forward to. Right, so I just, I think it's a little disingenuous to say you're not sure if it would have been unanimous or not, like you said.
I changed my statement.
On the point of resolution, we've, one thing that I kind of focus on in looking at this is, I understand the idea behind it, that there'd still be monies that are able to be used for any purpose. I don't believe that the language suggests that, I believe that the language suggests even just in the title of the resolution, project overrun fund, suggests that it has a different use or a specific use. But my main concern is with groups, committees, other stakeholders that have put the effort forward in doing the work behind, putting forward the resolution for the Mobile Command Center or the Austin folks at EDC who are doing the endless work of working with tons of different stakeholders to give us the information that they can, senior housing project that they're proposing and asking for ARPA funds for. Again, understanding that we're not looking at this as ARPA funds anymore, but can't forget that that's the source of where this all came from. So even just this morning at the Economic Development Corporation meeting, hearing the update on the senior housing project and where that's going, I don't believe that a resolution like this in good faith gives the idea that those efforts are able to really continue seriously if that money's not there to be used. So when we have uses that are specifically addressing the original intent of this money, I think we've just gotten far enough away from the point where we received this money for a specific purpose, and now it's been turned over and turned over and turned over enough time where it just seems to be this ambiguous gray chunk of money that nobody knows what to do with, that we've finally gotten to the point where we can say, well, let's just put it off and decide on the, take care of any overages that we might encounter. We have people that are doing awesome work for very specific reasons that can use this money for projects that don't just have immediate direct impact on one group, they have cascading effect on the county. And it seems like we've got this sentiment, in my opinion, right now, that just, we're kind of stuck in this thing of like, spending money is bad, let's not ever do it. But we've got people who are doing some work right now who are showing that investments in communities are making big impacts and we've got, like I'm going to beat a dead horse, the EDC showing how many different ways that they can invest dollars to impact the county in a positive way, not just in 2022, but moving forward. And I think that we need to start kind of embracing some of those things, because it's not just, we need to, instead of stagnating and just saying like, well, I guess we're at a deadlock, let's not do anything, but we've got people who are doing the work and putting good projects forward. You know, we are a very conservative county, we, our, our audit has showed us the numbers of more debt ratio and things like that, we are well from big spender, we are far away from that designation. So there's a difference between wanting to be careful with growth and wanting to be careful with spending and just killing all growth, killing all spend. So I think this kind of is in the spirit of killing some of the controlled growth that some projects are being put forward for, so I, I don't support using the money.
Yes. I just want to remind you, everyone, we already have spent 5.2 million of the ARPA funds that we received on various projects, so it isn't like we haven't spent, it isn't like we aren't supporting things like, like the recycling center, like trying to take all the other things that the roof, the powers, the, the, yeah, the roof, the communications powers over and billers balls and, and we have done those things that, that are supporting the community to the 2 and 5.2 million dollars since we started receiving ARPA funds. I think this is just a fail safe, because we don't know if inflation's going to go up and can you to go, is it going to be 10% next month? Is it going to go down to seven? Is it going to go down to five? And it's not for budgeting, because there isn't anybody that ever budgets for 9% inflation. So I think this is just a fail safe to say, we've got these funds, if we spend, if, if, you know, if we hold off a little to spend them to see what comes in the future, I, I personally think it's a good idea, because we have, like with the recycling center, we just randomly approved, what was it, 1.6 or 1.5 million for the recycling center without really knowing what we were going to spend it on, other than it was going to go to the recycling center, but we didn't have the details at that time, what it was going to be spent on. So I'd like to make sure that when we are spending additional funds, like, like the command center, that we have some more information about it. What, how's it, you know, what, we, I, I don't feel we have enough information in this that was given to us to say, yep, this is what it is, because 750,000 is our private warrant, starting at 550, and the last time we tracked it was 65.
Point of order, we're not talking that, there is that.
Yeah, no, I know. Okay, I'm just, but, so I'm, I'm, I would like to see us get more information before we spend this additional 2.8 million.
Let's go around, Doug.
I guess the first thing, I totally agree with Brian, but on the first line, on the first page, it says 3722, it says to create a budget overrun fund. So that's not putting it into the, the specific use. Then if you look at the resolution itself, it says for the sole purpose of funding non-personnel budget overruns at the close of the budget for years 22 and 23. And I guess I go back to, I, I see no problem with people writing resolutions and not sitting here to read and listen to them, because that's what we're here for. And what other job do we have? Let's just push this money into the general fund and we'll be done with it. Well, I, I like listening about the command center, because I, I agree on it, but everybody doesn't, we just saw that. But there are other things that may come up that would never get funded without these funds. And that's the way I look at it, is that we push it in the general fund, we'll never see it again. We'll be gone.
Amy?
Okay, go ahead. I share Ryan's thoughts on this and I also share this over budget overrun fund concern. This is not a specific at all about how this is going to be used, it's not at all clear where that would go. But we are being specific on non-personnel, personnel budget issues on, on 14 and also on 18 and 19, we say the funds will be used as, by way of a draft resolution to be heard by the board as recommendation, blah, 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 for the, for a cost overrun. This is different than our current budgeting. And in Health and Human Services, we often need money, or like last year, we gave that money because we didn't need it all. So does that mean now, the way it's been to now, we just, you know, it's been this flow that I think Vince, you know, the administrator kind of works the budget, you know, Health and Human can get, or Community Services can get back, now Community Service is busy because all that foster care, kids and the pandemic lockdown, so our costs are going up. But does that mean Tony has to have a resolution every time he wants to have a cost overrun on a, a foster care budget? It, it's, it's really structurally changes how we do budgeting now. And I think, I think we have to be careful about that, we don't really like that. And then lastly, I would just say that the intent of the ARPA money is for community. The museum, you know, you got your museum, that was a community asset, and this is not clearly a community asset. So I think it's important that we keep it in the community and continue to keep hearing resolutions.
We have to remember, if you remember when Chad told us, this is lost revenue from the pandemic. It's not free money that fell out of the sky, they just gave it the name ARPA. This is money that we would have had, should have went to the capital improvement plan as normal, which we should get every year, every department should have their five-year capital improvement plan, we should go through it. That's our budget system. This just says, this is where the money's supposed to be, we should ask our new finance man, if Chad, did he explain it that way to everyone? This is monies that we did not receive because of the pandemic.
Are you asking me?
I'm, no, I'm asking her.
Ryan too.
No, no, I look, it's right behind you.
It's a new title.
Can I ask in that? Because that's how we explained the money was, and now we're spending it like it's something else, and it's not. It should go through the budget process, is, is what we should do. So that's just, that's my thoughts. Can we ask him? Or, no, let her speak first and then ask.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
We're asking Don, go ahead, to finish that comment.
That was a starting point. Absolutely, this was recovery.
Recovery funds.
I, I wasn't here, I can't comment on how that conversation may have migrated over time. I provided my input to the resolution. You're welcome to read that, I'll answer any questions about the input that I provided.
What was your?
Yeah, I believe it's at the bottom of the resolution, the far right corner.
Do you want me to read that?
Just going legal impact?
Yeah.
Want me to read that, although?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and read it?
Okay. So the, this whole legal impact statement we have is, number one, resolution acknowledges budgetary pressures faced by the county and provides a means for mitigating inflation and supply chain issue. Two, the resolution augments the county's contingency fund for 2022 and 2023 with the limitation that funds may not be used for personnel-related expense. Number three, the fund balance, the fund balance above is current as of 8/22 and does not include potential expenses related to ARPA projects that have been under discussion by the board and its committees.
The, okay.
Go ahead, Don. Um. What is, I did have a question about what, what is our contingency fund balance? How much slush do we already have? Rough.
Hands from year to year, but.
Like?
We started out about, this year about 150, I believe, wasn't it, 22?
Well. Well, that's what we might have maintained, which is of course a very small fraction of the overall budget. But we also going through the budget process of another 600,000 or so to distribute across needs that might arise that are beyond the percentage increase in the different departments. So there's a, this year we gave departments an additional 1.5% to allocate over non-personnel lines. Some departments are going to come back and say, I need 5%. Somebody are going to come back and say, I don't need the whole amount of 1.5%. But if, as those overages stack up, we have about $650,000 to distribute across those non-personnel lines. So as I read the resolution for budget years 23 and 24, it's a resolution basically augments the reserve.
Have to be, what's the point about non-personnel versus personnel?
I think I should reference it wouldn't be used for pay raises, it wouldn't be used for adding people.
Okay, I'm John.
I was on the board when we spent the 23 million dollars to build our justice center all the way from, from our, uh, use and every, from the jail and that. And when we had an overrun, we, it was, we had to stay at 23 million dollars. For example, to substitute some of the things that we voted on, we, the, uh, the sheriff's shooting range, we deleted that in order to put in some of the other overrun thing. I clearly don't understand this year that, oh, whatever the overrun is, there's the money that we, uh, that we put in that you can have. And I went to Alden and Farmington and I filled Billy's board the other night. In the past couple of months, when it started and I said, talk to your administrator. This ARPA fund, we're reaching out outside of Balsam Lake to, uh, it, it, this is something that anybody in the county can request the chair. And I think a lot of them did that. Now are we supposed to go and tell those constituents, oh, no, you can't have none of that. This is all going to over, for overrun in case of, uh, there's something in our, in our center over there. It's all paid for. That, that's not, that's not an honest way to be facing your constituents.
The money is going to come from somewhere. Mo is going to be way over budget. Tony is going to be probably way over budget on child placement. It's not their fault that we have 9% inflation. It's not their fault that we can't get equipment, materials, whatever it is. The fact of life is, is that we're all paying more for everything. We're all paying more for gas, we're all paying more for electricity, whatever it is. And the county is going to pay that bill because there's no choice. So why not this one? I, I guess I, I don't see it. It, it still has to be spent. It has to come through. It's making the directors report to this full board. Because anybody who wants a chunk of this pie has to write a resolution and come in front of us and say, here's why I need it, instead of going to the administrator and saying, hey, I need a hundred thousand dollars for child placement. I need a hundred thousand dollars for oil for roads or, you know, because trucks are overrun. This money is going to be spent somewhere. It's going to have to come from somewhere. So as Kim says, there's no free money. Somebody paid for it. And if we sit here and think as a board that we appropriated 1.62 million to recycling and that's going to be a drip in the bucket that we're dreaming. And so we got $5 million out there plus that's already spent. We dropped the other 2.83 million, whatever it is. What happens to the recycling center if it comes back in at 4 million? What happens to the towers if they come in at 1.5 million instead of 1 million? Are we going to go borrow that much more money? We've, as Sharon said, we've spent a lot of the money. We haven't physically spent it, but we have appropriated it. And we can go ahead and spend the rest of it. But when those extra bills comes in and recycling is $4 million. If it is, what are we going to do? Or are we going to tell Tanya, find it in your budget next year to make up a shortfall? Is Morgan a blacked up seven miles less road to pay for a truck in the oil? Next year. You, you can say this doesn't affect everybody in the county. But when we're not giving them the funds that they're overrunning, that's going to be a big effect on the county next year. When they have to balance their budget in next year's budget, when prices are going to be realistically so high, they can't do what they want to do.
Anybody else?
I have a question for. Yeah, it's a question for Vince about that. And I'm new here, so I don't know how these things go. To have your staff writing resolutions here to get ARPA money, is that? But that doesn't seem like how things have been working here. Is that a good use of staff time? To write resolutions to us rather than work with you? I, I mean, I just don't understand the way the process.
I mean, in some cases, this board said that one of their priorities was broadband. We dedicated a million dollars to ARPA fund. Because that wasn't in the budget, that's when we had to bring it through a resolution and get two thirds vote. So that's how that worked. Do I want, could staff be saying, hey, there's two and a half million dollars left, where should we spend it? No, that's not a good use of their time. We try to gauge our priorities based on what year you're told on. Then our budget is nothing more than a reflection of what's important to you all. And it basically is a policy, right? It's, it's saying, here's what we're going to dedicate our. Yes, I, I think you're very good points here. ARPA funds came with an intent to support the community, to support specific causes. Remember they said initially with broadband and the fight COVID and maybe one other thing. But then they said, now we're going to change it because we know county's lost money. And because of that, we want to be able to offset that for the counties so they can inject money into their community and, and spend it appropriately as they deem fit. We are hitting the overrun though. So there's a good two sides to the story. We mentioned some of them. We know that we're going to go over on recycling if we're going to do anything significant there. It looks like Clamfall's Dam is going to go over what we originally thought. There are some things where we have to be prepared to roll. So staff does not sit around thinking up resolutions on how to spend money. That's not what their role is. But I do appreciate their ideas when they come forward and say, this is a need, how can we pay for it? And in some cases, I know Bob's not here. I said, no, I'm not going to put LIDAR in the budget because it was a last minute deal, he threw it at me. You can present it to the board to say, is that something that they would approve for ARPA fund?
Thank you.
Long answer.
Okay.
So they changed, when they changed over to the, um, the lost revenue was with the the last bit of money, I want to say it was probably six months ago when that, that came down as lost revenue. And that's why when Sharon's proposal for the, for the roof over the bell tower, that, you know, that, that live or that museum was closed. But you, you, I don't know. Stepping on myself here, but let's say that, that I, I assume that they have either donations or a small fee for people to tour the museum. And to me, that's a loss revenue. That's big time loss revenue. The fair, it wasn't on last year, right? Or the year, the year before, what, what kind of loss revenue did, did you suffer there? I, my, my integrity cannot let go of the intent of this act that came on. Okay, the intent is still, is still a recovery act based on what happened during COVID. And I know there is no free money. We're paying for everything, right? As taxpayers, I mean, this is our money, it isn't, it isn't the county's money. Wafor Reservation gave each citizen a check for their. I mean, they can do that because they're probably reservation and they have a small unit. But the intent is a recovery act. The lost and lost and, and then lost revenue.
And I view it as just that. It is a recovery act and quite frankly, with the overruns that are going on, the ones that need recovery are not the government, it's the taxpayers. If we can take some of those funds and handle some of those overruns, that burden comes off the taxpayers for the overruns that are going to come down the road. Because to everyone's point, no place to get that money. It's going to be spent, we've got to spend it, it's going to be gone. Only way to help recover those in rural Polk County that suffered that loss and need the recovery if they don't have an increased tax burden. Money's got to come from somewhere. If we can cover these overruns with this, it prevents that increase in revenue required to run our county moving forward.
Okay, Amy? I have a question, I guess back on whoever budget for you. So walk me through what the way, what will happen in community services under this resolution when Tony comes in under budget or, or because we have, you know, child placement costs that have exceeded, or we have some substantive use thing. What, what is that? The way you do it now and how is this going to change? Because it looks to me like it's a significant change.
Well, I, I think, and Mr. Olson can speak to the intent. I think we're looking at things that we know are going to be fixed off. We have to fix roads, we have to pay for gas, we need new vehicles that are worn out. What's happening in the course of one year is the prices have gone up 20% or something like that. And I think that's where we go in the hole with that. Or in this case, those funds, we would dedicate it to those things. It would be a decision that would have to be made by me or my staff with your all approval. I think it would, you know, with, with the ARPA fund, I would come and get approval to say, this is how we're going to spend it. Is that your understanding, Malia or John?
Well, I think the, the child placements and the like was put right in the resolution as an example of a potential overrun. But what would currently happen with or without this resolution in the frank? It would come out of the contingency fund. So if the division director said, I don't want to bring a resolution to use these budget overrun funds. I'm fine with the contingency fund, they would have to do nothing. There really is no incentive for a division director to draft this resolution, highlight their overrun. So it wouldn't.
Any more comments?
Resolution 3722?
Yes, approves and no. Yes, to approve the, the resolution as presented.
This needs a two thirds. It requires two thirds.
Right.
Quite an order there. Two thirds why we're not spending any money, are we?
You're allocating a budget, a new budget third fund for this year. You're not buying.
All right.
Go, go.
Kim O'Connell?
Yes.
Amy Middleton?
No.
Lisa, are you free?
No.
What, Arcan?
Yeah.
DJ Simmons?
Yes.
Don Donna Price?
No.
Brad Olson?
Yes.
Doug Brody?
No.
Steve Wardall?
No.
Ryan Wood?
No.
Stacy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Dan Rupp?
Yes.
Barbara McAfee?
No.
Karen Kelly?
Yes.
You're tied seven to seven again, chairs?
No.
Seven to eight? Oh, you said either way. Yeah, sorry.
An update from Mo on.
Um, the third one, that one, yes.
David?
Hello.
And Mo, what we're talking about projects, not talking about money. They're trying me. Uh, just an update on the government center project and some projects that we're funding and stuff and how they're saving. If you know, looking at the, I'm looking at it right now, on the next slide. Uh, the government center is moving along very well. We started moving into the new offices, this is the reception area. If you walk in the hallway, you can see the new, um, some of the legs that are installed. Uh, some of the panels here are temporary, the ones that were ordered are not in yet, we're still waiting on them. The solid service countertops and the service window for the receptionist there. The next slide. Uh, again, the lobby, um, this is looking into the clerk, uh, the treasurer's office here and the deeds office or their shared lobby. Next slide. Uh, the boardroom, the boardroom. Um, you can see the carpets in there. We still have temporary spots for the, um, outlets and the floors, that's not in yet. Uh, we're waiting for the furniture next slide. This is a furniture that will come with it right now. Uh, it's on order, uh, six, eight weeks out. Uh, the ABA do not have a timeframe when the, um, the sound system and the 285 inch monitors on the wall are going in. That is coming. Uh, the main floor bathrooms are complete and in. Uh, this is a look into zoning through their window. Right now this window is plexiglass because that glass is not coming in till next week with an installation date of the following week. And so we are dealing with a lot of those delays and, um, materials. Next slide. Uh, this is the ground floor. This is, uh, mine and waters area, uh, their sample lab. Uh, water sample lab that we put in, a couple of deep sinks in there, a spot for, uh, refrigerator for their samples. Uh, and this was the old file room down there, uh, that Health and Human Services staff that we converted into three different offices. Uh, next slide. Uh, as I said, uh, August 1st, we moved the offices to the ground floor. That was completed, uh, semi completed, so after work to go on all those lines are in yet. August 15th, this Monday, we moved into the main floor and we moved public coming into the main entrance there on the south side. So the east side down below where the public was coming in is off limits to both employees and customers. Uh, we have cranes coming in, in a week or two to start the roof uh, replacement on that one. Uh, so switching parking lot was the big thing. Uh, it's been going very well so far. Even getting a spot for the smoker, having a spot to smoke to put that away from them. So we are working on lead times. Uh, we still have lighting panels aren't until September. Uh, part of our lighting fixtures came in, part of our light switches came in. We had a lot of temporary things in there. The pillars are still coming in in March. Our main electrical here is February, uh, January timeframe. And our doors are still about eight weeks out was this morning timeframe. So we've still got temporary doors on the main level. That's a very nice, um, green cube room. So it's not part of our colors for the building there. Um, so we're still waiting on quite a bit of stuff. Next slide. Uh, the budget, 7.6 million dollars. Um, out of the fifth of August, we paid off $3 million of that. Uh, on the fifth, we had about 23,000 left in contingency. I have talked with LHB and Martin Johnson to see what we are going to project through the end of the project. Right now we're looking at a 2.75, uh, 3.5% over budget right now, which is twice the about 246,000 dollars. Is what we're projecting on the high end comparatively. Uh, next slide. Go back one more. Uh, one of the things we're dealing with is, um, you know, naturally changes that you move into different phases. We, we do have asbestos removal in the second floor and it wasn't in the pile, it was in the carpet room. Some reason when they laid the carpet down, they, they removed the. they they removed the, uh, pile that was underneath it back in the day and they put down a different glue. So now I got to mitigate that. I just can't cover over it. Um, when they open up the walls of the second floor, the foam insulation that is required now to be encapsulated is not four feet, it's six feet to the ceiling. So that has a little more encapsulation in there. Um, our second review of our fire plans came back. The state inspector has an extra eleven thousand dollars worth of uh, fire alarm system that he wants installed. Um, brought and see I know. So we're dealing with those type of things as we go through the project, but right now we're looking at a high of three point five percent over the original budget at the time. So. Um, other projects.
What number would that be then? So here's another huge overrun we're going to have.
Two hundred and forty six thousand.
Is the overrun?
Yes.
Plus the contingency was already.
That's the.
Not that.
No, well, the contingency was part of the budget.
How much was the contingency?
Three fifty eight. But that was part of the original budget. Um, next slide. When falls down, another large project. This is the, um, uh, first go at how that would look. Now, what you'd see here is the old dam is on the north side of the eye. The new dam is elaborate design, the same as Atlas. Um, what it shows here is the sheet piling that would go in for water control. And this would be the spillway. The diversion channel as they build the dam. Once the dam is built, part of that sheet piling comes out. The other half stays in for, uh, to lock out that water from that side. That's what's causing a lot of the, depending on the the water that seeps down the side of the existing dam on that. There's some water coming out there. With that, um, next slide. This is what it would look like as a three D image, uh, when you go there. And again, the old dam would be removed on the other side with that. This has some advantages being on this side that, um, of the road. It relieves the water from slapping up against the bridge down there that has iron grills underneath there that we could actually sandblast and paint them, help preserve that bridge. Um, less maintenance, has a natural overflow that we don't have to go up there every time it rains in luck or other areas and open the gate and close the gate, trying to keep the level the same. It'll automatically keep that level there until it wants to drought. And then we have a gate that you can let water go down through the downstream. Next slide. Budget. This is what it looks like now at high levels. Um, three point one million dollars. Um, again, we had a two million dollar earmark grant from our, um, uh, politicians in down in Madison, and we also have a matching grant for anything over the two million. So that is, we're about six hundred thousand dollars more for that project right now. That's what I said. Again, it's early in the stages as you go through designing these things until you get to like sixty percent, get your solid numbers of what you're building. Um, they're high level estimates. The next slide. Recycling center, recycling center. This is the look at their their first go at what it looks like to increase our efficiency and and put more recycling through there. Right now, this is the existing building right here. This would be increasing the tipping floor and adding a paper line. Um, with that, with a, um, better sorting to, um, be able to sort number five plastics, natural plastics that are more valuable and get them instead of putting them into a whole legal bundle. Um, this can be phased in, you know, this side. Could wait for another project, um, but this would be the extension right now. The talk is how do you get customers in there? One option is to drive them. Highway eight is right here to drive customers around here so they're not in shipping area. And unload product right back here with the customers, so they're away from the main, main industry safer. Next slide. This one here, new equipment on that one. I bought all the new equipment, estimated at one point five million dollars. Uh, facility improvements, break room, the office, um, lighting, the envelope, all those type of stuffs. Point three to two point six. Um, right now, yeah, that all up with a twenty percent contingency. You're looking at about three point eight to four point three seven million. Um, we're meeting tomorrow at ten o'clock with the team from SDH and RRS. Um, how to get, how can we phase this in and equipment? And how can we stretch that one point two six million in that phase to try to make that work and what kind we phase that at? Next slide. Other projects, the bell tower. Got to look at this one. This is an important one here. Hundred eighty thousand of ARPA funds set aside. Little bit came in at a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Wow, nice.
Put a caveat on that. Oh, that's based off engineering board and site inspections. We haven't opened up a wall yet, so. You're right, though. Justice Center roof. Again, we went out of line of credit on that one, two point one million dollars. We got our estimates for that number off of, you know, a rubber membrane. Um, but we've, I've been working and talking with a rookman manufacturer, correct? To see what other options are out there, advantages to cost and long term investments. Next slide. And I'll come back in general government with this. Um, this is the justice center roof. It's a large project. You look at a single ply, um, rubber membrane roof. Two point one million dollars as a twenty year lifecycle. Uh, repair costs at that point, about fifty thousand dollars. I could go to a multi roofed design, which is about five times as thick. And when I'm saying that, it's about a half inch thick versus a rubber membrane, which is this thick. Um, this one here is a forty five year roof. I can get a forty year warranty on that with, uh, cost on, uh, with thirty years of restoration. Um, can last that roof out to forty five to fifty years. Forever men, rub- rubber membrane roof. Uh, is going to need to be replaced in about fifteen or twenty years, twenty five years. You can't get them out to thirty years with maintenance and stuff. You know, that's a risk that means this is a modified asphalt membrane roof on this one. Um, but then you have a replacement cost again in two thousand and forty three. Um, and then some more maintenance cost, so. We could save, uh, the taxpayers a little bit more money in the long run over forty years, uh, by spending an extra five hundred thousand dollars. But that's going to bring that up to general government and get that in there when we go through the budget process. But a long term investment, um, it gets us out farther with a better product. And I hope this is a forty five year old, a forty five year building that we still intend to have in fifty years, so. Next slide. That's all I got. I made a mistake. No questions on there. That one.
Yes.
In your estimate for the dam, you have design bidding and construction services. Construction services are an onsite inspector. We're here. Not going to be doing that job every day. Be more construction management service, yes. Somebody else is going to do all that. Yes.
Any other questions?
Just I'm looking through the room and saying, did I fall asleep somewhere on this dam? I, all of a sudden, we're building a new dam. And it's like, question is, we are doing this. How did we get to this stage? I just, I don't know. Well, that's the only thing. To save the dam, we go through that to get to the five hundred year floodplain. Um, they looked at, you know, repair costs to repair the dam or try to get that footprint in there to get that five hundred year storm spillway. Um, with existing structure right now, it's it's really not feasible to try to get that in that to try to report, repair the existing dam. This is a better alternative to, uh, for long term with that.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
For two twelve, county board chair report. The only thing I have to report is the fact that I went to the seminar for a couple days at what was down at Wisconsin County Association in reference to, uh, the county board chairman's position and how the these amazing following, generally following the what goes all counties. Uh, you sit for two days and listen to a tremendous amount of legal opinion. So it's much easier to sit there and just determine all these things that they're telling you apply to our county in our specific situation. And how these meetings are conducted. Taking the consideration of the people that participated in the events, meeting. And this is a thing that I have discovered was I, you know, I never ever really compliment attorneys much, but, uh, the fact means that the information that we've been functioning under in this, in our meetings since I've been around here have been exceptionally well advised by our, our legal, our legal team. And, uh,
Over the years.
And so I came to the determination that our meeting is run really, um, legally and pretty well, pretty well put together by our, our rules. And this, of course, all comes from, from different, uh, opinions that we've put together over the years with our legal. So you can feel comfortable. The one thing that that did come up is in, uh, in part of your where you may run into a conflict of interest. The safest thing that you can do, if you consider or even think that you might have a conflict of interest, before you do any talking, any determination, go to our, our legal team and talk to them. And at the goal by the advice that you receive. That exonerates you from any, any, uh, potential mistake that they may have made on your behalf. So, uh, that's, that's one important thing that I never knew, but possible further one acts, but let the attorney be responsible. Okay, but that's basically all I, all I have, I've had, other than the regular committee meetings that we've been discussing here for a couple hours. So, uh, that's all I have. And I'll, uh, I'll talk, see if the administrator's got anything.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I agree with your assessment of our legal department. Um, budget preparations, as you know, are underway. This is a busy time of the year for the divisions and for the departments. They're submitting their workbooks, their funding requests, their saving opportunities to Don, myself, and our new finance manager, Jared Corrier. Uh, next month, the plan for each committee to review the budget and how they affect their committee for them to make comments on that draft, uh, present, uh, budget. And then the, the draft budget next month at this meeting, uh, I will have a draft budget for you all to review. Then, of course, in October, when we really dig into it. And then we improve it in November. And that meeting in November is the second Tuesday of the month, not the third. That's, that's statutory required.
You want to eat that? I feel.
I don't have it off the top of my head. But somebody may be able to.
Yeah, fifteen?
No.
Yep. November eighth.
November eighth?
Yeah.
That'll be a full county board meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Tax collection are occurring at a better rate than normal. Um, and hats off to our treasurer and her staff, Amanda Nissen. I think through some minor changes in communication on when they communicate and how they communicate to people who are delinquent or maybe late making their property tax payment. Uh, we are at this point eighty two percent, uh, but, uh, still eighty two percent of everything that's been filled out has been submitted. By comparison, the last four years, it's ranged between seventy nine and seventy nine percent. So, uh, you know, it, every little bit helps. We expect to get all of it before the end of the year, but it helps to get that money in as early as possible. And I think that, you know, it, to me, it's a point of emphasis is, as servants of the, the county, are we responding? Are we listening? Are we adapting? And I think in this case, they're, they adapted their communication style. And I think it's that one of that impact. Caution to discuss is, uh, when the economy goes south, if it does, with inflation, with housing costs up and so on, uh, there are challenges. And and sometimes that's when the collection rates go down. So we have to watch that. Uh, many of us have been discussing over the past couple of years, the need for transportation. Uh, possibly some type of support in transportation for people in need or other purposes. Uh, a transfer state, transportation study is being conducted right now by the county, uh, along with West Central Regional Planning Commission. Uh, a survey is being conducted to find out exactly what type of transportation would be most useful, needed or not needed. Uh, to date, we have over three hundred, uh, surveys in, which I think is a good start. The survey is available until August twenty sixth. Um, over a week. You can get paper copies from Tim Anderson and Land Information or by going to the county's homepage. And there's a link up in the right hand corner uh, with a survey month is what it's called. You can do that. Uh, legal updates. We really don't have any legal updates on the sour trail. The next hearing is in September with Judge Black. Uh, and then with respect to the fair, I don't know, Malia, if that, that meeting was set up with our executive committees. It's still the twenty second.
Yeah.
Okay. So they'll be, we're making progress there. They'll be discussing that. And now, lastly, in my report, I've asked Tanya to give a brief update on diseases.
Thanks, Vince. I'll start with the known here, COVID. Um, we have, um, we bumped back down to low community level. Um, last week when I reported to HHS, we were mediums. We were afraid that we were going to go to high. Our neighboring counties are all high. They still are at high. For some reason, we're at low. I don't, I don't know why, but it's a good thing. Um, we still are testing five days a week. We're at the, we're in the parking lot. We're in the shed right now at the government center. Um, quite busy over there with all the construction moving down to the lower level and testing and employees coming and going. This week was a little bit different for us. Um, you may have seen in the news that the CDC is changing the guidance again for, um, quarantine and isolation. So no longer doing close contacts. We are, um, if you were exposed, um, and somebody tells you, you just mask for seven days and test on day five. So you don't have to stay home. Hooker down, um, just being mindful of symptoms and getting tested. Anytime you get symptoms, but on day five is recommended. If you're positive, stay home, um, five days. And then if you're three, six to ten, wear a mask. And it does not apply to congregant living, if, um, like person homes or jail. Um, I don't want that spreading through. Um, there, they are working on an upstir for those who need it, um, being out in September, more on that. Um, the state has not issued their guidance, but it's, um, anticipated that we will follow CDC. It just takes them a little bit longer to, um, make that official. Um, that's all I have for COVID. Uh, there, people are hearing about monkeypox. We could give a little bit of an update on monkeypox. Um, it is a derivative of smallpox. Blisters, sores, flu-like illness could appear. Um, last week at HHS, we had reported, I think, twenty six, um, known cases in the state and the south end of the state. Now we're up to confirm thirty one. And on the cloud today, DHS unofficially said forty two cases in Wisconsin. Um, Minnesota is up to seventy two. And the people who were listening on the HHS, um, when the question was asked, we reported to you that it was fifty five last week in Minnesota. So now they've jumped up to seventy two cases confirmed. Um, it is primarily, yeah, um, showing up in gay or bisexual men and it's by very close contact. So, um, I think the public health advice is that if there are those individuals in the community who are having, um, close contact, um, they could be contacting the public health department for guidance on getting vaccine. Vaccine is very limited. Um, good news is that it's a very incurable disease. It's just kind of right out of the course. Um, vaccine does help to, um, minimize symptoms and of course, um, so that's what you know about and there's blue, green algae and little bugs.
So this is one where the vaccine can be taken after you've contracted.
It is after exposure. Yep. Um, so if you have a. Um, so if you have a known exposure in the last two weeks, call us and we'll get you connected to, uh, vaccine.
Thank you.
This is the chairman. I can address that briefly. Uh, we're sort of in a transition month. Uh, when I was, before you last, I showed you how we were making some changes to how we report data, including substance abuse data using time series graphs. Our data analyst is really, uh, filling it with this. And by next month, uh, we imagine that we're going to have something to show you where we're, uh, pulling information directly from databases rather than having to rewrite information, uh, and risking error. Uh, we moved to a new platform, which is a Microsoft Power BI platform. Great thing about that, it auto builds graph for us. No more time spent building graphs every month. And it will automatically post all results to websites. Uh, for your future consideration, you can see data each month on substance abuse, but all of these technologies and all the, the, uh, sort of, uh, behind the scenes, uh, skill and talent can be used for other purposes. And so I would wish, uh, for you to consider, uh, how you might use these tools differently. Uh, not, uh, we don't want to forget about substance abuse, but there may be reasons that, uh, general government would have for looking at, for instance, HR data, our open decisions comparing to uh, our hires. Are we, are we hiring at fast enough rate? Maybe, uh, Tanya would like some dashboards on things that are happening over in HHS, same with Bob and ES, uh, the sheriff and Mo and Public Works and Public Safety. So, uh, it might be appropriate for the police board to consider adjusting this agenda item uh, for future meetings. Take it back to exec, let exec think about what ought to be done, uh, with data. So you as, uh, a policy board can have everything in your fingertips that you need.
Do you already have any, uh? Okay, now we're good. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about before on the meetings attended? John?
Yes, uh, I attended six town and village and state association, but one that stands out is twenty ninth. I went to the village. And the engineer of Minnesota is building the two forty three bridge. And this totally affects especially, uh, especially our, uh, funds in whole counties as far as our, uh, sales tax and that. Uh, there, there's there is one, there's three plans. One plan is that bridge could be closed for two years. Uh, the reason that I wanted to him to make a statement is that number three plan, uh, there's a lot of talk that, uh, that would, is, that would, uh, uh, eliminate that cascade fall, which is a national, uh, national attraction. Huge sales tax to whole county. Well, so the, uh, Wisconsin engineer was there and the Minnesota engineer was there. I couldn't take up too much time on the building board agenda, so we went out in the hall. And I asked them to, uh, send to you the three options. And the Minnesota engineer told me that that would not be true, that they would not, any of the plans would not affect that cascade fall. But boy, who do you trust, you know, uh? There's, there's some people that have studied this engineering, said that it would eliminate that. Uh, that would, that would be, would take a huge referendum from the people in whole county. Because I think we've all got a responsibility that they preserve that cascade fall. That's the whole attraction of whole county is. People are there nationally every day and they spend money. You got to protect that, so. I'm just trying to keep an update. And, uh, I hope that they follow us through and because you're the man that, uh, got to be our, our key rep on that, so. Just wanted to bring you up to date. Everybody, uh, beware that that's got to be something we all.
Thank you, John. Anybody else have anything?
Really quickly, I have a couple from Boston Lake. Um, I, I don't know if I can do this, but I wanted to ask a question about Mr. Worth from his point to, um, when you had said that you'd like to possibly consider using. Were, were you asking us to take any action on the agenda item that's typically on the county board agendas? Like, for example, what, what I thought you were possibly asking was should help in human services, for example, take what is usually the substance abuse report on this agenda? Move it more towards help in human services so that they can inform this board how we're using that data?
Are you okay if I dress that?
Yeah.
Well, I think the idea was that it's a, it's a utility. It's a general purpose set of tools and capacities. It's been used so far for one purpose. And the very brief conversation that I had with, uh, Vince Netherlands, the idea might be to bring it to executive and talk about how it might be most effective. If it's still for substance abuse, that's wonderful to do it. But, uh, we could also look at expanding, uh, beyond just that one topic and then it might end up cascading with environmental services or HHS. Uh, it's, it's purpose in specific skills and capacity. We've used it so far for substance abuse. We continue to answer those questions about substance abuse in this meeting if that's appropriate, but we, we can do more as well.
Uh, thank you. And then, uh, I, like John, I'm going to see what the folks are thinking. For meetings, one big shared topic that they have been discussed there and which again is why I kind of EDCs in your housing project and that is because both of them in one way or another have brought up housing problems and then possible housing initiatives that they have or possible strategies to bring in different types of housing to meet the needs of our possibility. So just getting interested, we've got kind of some shared shared needs and shared solutions, possible solutions between the county and then our villages. And then less to do with us, but just, I guess, it's good information. It's both built on them. Also like I'm are going through the ropes of figuring out how to manage short-term rental regulations, both your Airbnbs and B M B Os and things like that. So both Mel Town and Boston Lake are figuring out. You know, they all of a sudden exploded. They're in our lab. How do we, you know, what do we do right now? So you're a little bit behind the eight ball. So it's been interesting seeing that. One thing that they did say is that they need more communication from county level. Um, as far as, because like if I was somebody who went and bought a, a home somewhere in Boston Lake, for example, uh, I could come to the county and get some type of, um, licensing. That would say that I'm, I'm ready to go. I'm ready to rent my property out. But Boston Lake as it is, it supersede that. Like whether the county told them they can do it or not, Boston Lake say no. So they're, they're, they've requested, and this has all been communicated to everybody else, that they've requested more communication. So when that, when somebody comes to the county and seeks a license to be a short-term rental, that they let the village know. So the village could say. Um, and then the other one is food trucks. So they're bold and aided the same way as in the same way as short-term rentals. Uh, food truck discussion popped up for both villages. Less so Mill Town. Mill Town is trying to get ahead of it. Boston Lake is kind of in control of it. Um, so I just, countywide, interesting seeing how.
Any else?
Hopefully everybody listened to Mr. Mo that were overruns is almost four million dollars. That takes care of that ARPA money.
No site meeting near that at.
We heard on the public count, comments, some accusations of former board member, I guess. And I understand, was it, I, I would like to ask if the, uh, if our board councils have addressed this and I heard that it was, I didn't see the agenda on the executive committee. Is there any comments or anything on the executive committee? Has anybody addressed the, the accusation word to the county? Has our county council or anybody reviewed it or?
I addressed them at the executive.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were. They were addressed.
That was before the complaint, but wasn't a complaint before it's been. We had something different now tonight.
The formal.
Yeah.
She formalized it by doing it. So now it's.
No, I just asked if there was any kind of review.
Go ahead.
Meeting I attended, they, the lovely lady sent me a letter about that same exact subject. You know, I went, I couldn't get a hold of her on the phone, so I went to her house. Talked it over with her, explained that, you know, I didn't write that letter. I authorized that letter. I didn't anything in that letter, so. I'd like to see it addressed. I don't know, Malia, when will we address it? You have an opinion, correct?
I, I mean, it's substantially the same as the document handed out at the executive committee. I, I already believe I addressed it. The only thing left hanging was for me to look at one subsection that I had not looked at. So it will be on the next executive order for me to talk about.
Was the executive committee chair was the county board then?
I guess that's up to the committee.
Before that, so how, how should I adjourn? What's the order?